The committee of the whole meeting on May 10, 2021 to order. And we will start with a roll call and please announce the city of your location when you check in.
Ms. Bernard.
I think she said something.
Oh, wait, who are you? Did you ask for?
Yep, you. Sorry, Hadass.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I was unmuting myself. Yeah, so Hadass Bernard, I'm in Oakland County, Birmingham, Michigan.
Mr. Cohen.
Present in Royal Oak, Michigan.
Mr. Furman.
Present in Flint, Michigan.
Dr. Guadalupe.
Present in Oakland Township, Michigan.
Dr. Hans.
Present in Bloomfield Township, Michigan.
Mr. Landsman. Ms. Amy Dyer.
Present in Pembroke Hills, Michigan.
Ms. Newman. Ms. Root.
Present from Rochester Hills.
Dr. Todd.
Present in Bloomfield Township.
Mr. Torres. Mr. Lindemere.
Present in Waterford, Michigan. So moving on to public comment, is there any public comment?
We do not have public comment online or in the chat. I do want to remind people if they wish to make public comment, we'll have a second opportunity and they can use our online form or they can type their question or statement in the chat and then our customer services team will respond.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is business operations and we have a standing item of contractual obligations over $100,000 and I believe that Diana and Christine are going to present.
That is correct. Diana, I think is going to go first.
If I unmute myself. Good afternoon, everyone. You would think after a year or so of doing a lot of online meetings that I would remember to unmute myself. So I hope everybody is having a great afternoon. What Christine and I are bringing to you is a request to approve a contract with Civic Plus for a new website platform and design. OCHN has utilized the same website provider for the past several years and we are in need of a website design. As you know, our organization, services and so on and so forth have changed and really making sure that we have a website that is intuitive, easy to use is something that is important to us as well as allows people to get the information that they need. Since we have been using the same provider for quite some time, we decided to issue a request for a proposal for website development and administration in November of last year. We had 12 responses that were received, I'm sorry, 12 responses were received and four vendors were invited for verbal presentations to the RFP committee. One thing that is important to note is that we did have a person served on that committee with us because we really wanted to make sure that we had a perspective outside of staff's perspective. During this process, we selected a company and vendor called Civic Plus for the following reasons. They really brought to us a user-friendly solution along with tools to make managing the website easier. They have extensive government experience. They actually almost only build websites and other services and platforms for governmental entities. They're going to bring us a custom layout and redesign that works on all devices, whether it's a mobile device or laptop or a computer. They had really end-user friendly features in ADA compliance, which was important to us, as well as this is a cloud-based platform. Once again, we have been using a cloud-based, cloud-first strategy here at OCHN. Next slide, please. From the investment, what we had is a total price of $125,000. As you can see in this, we have most of our investment is in the first year of about $84,000. That is for them to come in, walk through OCHN through what our needs are and how to design the new website, helping us get that ready to go. And then in year two, in year three, what we have are, those are the annual maintenance cost with 5% increase built in. As I do with most IT contracts, I put in a 15% contingency in the event of, once we get started, they have something else that we need, we need extra hours, so on and so forth. One thing that is also important to note is that with this contract, OCHN will get a new website design every four years. Christine?
So a few things that are important to mention. We have put together a work group internally. So subject matter experts will review the content of the website every three months, but in this early development stage, they will look at their areas as well as other areas on the website. So they're getting, we're getting input from different vantage points. Once the website is in its initial rough draft, we will bring it to person-served via work groups like the RRAC, the Strategic Planning Group and the CAC for their input from a person-served perspective and general community members. We're also going to share it with our network PR work group for their input. We want to, one of our goals really is to ensure that people recognize OCHN as the overarching manager of all of our network providers and services being delivered. So just to make sure that we are reaching that goal, something else that's really important to us is the data on the back end. So we'll be able to evaluate, are we hitting our target market? And then also just ensuring that we have that level of expertise as we look into competitive health agencies, ensuring our provider directory is of the same quality that people are getting, say, from Blue Cross, Blue Shield, just ensuring that we're at that level of expertise and professionalism. We should have a launch date by July. Really, they will take the content we have once it's been reviewed by our subject matter experts. They'll format it in the redesign. It will be live in a back view that only we'll be able to see and those individuals whom we want to share it with before we make the full transition. Traditionally, when we make, have a website redesign, the former website stays live. Nobody has access to it, but we have all that information if for some reason we need to move something over, just to make sure the transition is smooth because the website is such an important resource, both for our community and for the people we serve.
Are there any questions for Christine and I?
Dr. Han, you have a question?
Yes, my question is, when was the last redesign done?
The last redesign was about either two or three years ago, between two and three years. So it's important for redesign of a website to happen every three years. Four years is the furthest you want to go, just like with anything, you want to keep your website aesthetically pleasing, relevant, make sure the colors and new functionalities get introduced all the time. So being current with those different resources really enhances the user experience.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from any board members? I have a question. What, can you go over what the basis was for us selecting this vendor? Was it based on cost, service, both?
Yeah, I could absolutely go into that. When we were looking at vendors, it was about cost and then it was also about who could give us the most user-friendly platform from two aspects. One is the internal one. So is Christine and her team are managing it, making sure that they have the tools. There were some things that they don't have, that they're going to have in the future once we migrate to this new platform. And then also wanting to make sure that we got a platform and had a partner who would really help us to get an easy website to manage. And this happened to be the best solution for us and it was also the most cost-effective by a significant amount of dollars.
Can you talk a little bit about why it's important in particular for our organization to be ADA compliant?
Well, it is so important, but I'll let Christine talk to that because this is really something that she spearheaded.
It's actually required by law under the ADA Section 1557. So there are significant number of guidelines. Above and beyond that, we really need to be the role model for the rest of the community and not just meeting the baseline requirements, but setting the standard of accessibility for people in our, in our community.
I appreciate that. Some questions are for the education of the general public. This is a public meeting. You had mentioned that there are, that we will, this will provide us with the ability to have another redesign within the next four years. Is that included in the cost or will there be another request for additional funding when that comes up?
Yeah, that's a great question. That is, it will be in four years, they will give us a free website design within our current costs. So there would be no additional costs unless we decided that we wanted to buy a new module or do something different. Which is nice because typically you would have to pay for that redesign.
Right. Are there any other questions from board members?
This is Hadass. I have one final question. What, if any, will the board be involved in reviewing the design or the website prior to going live?
We could absolutely bring that to the board to share, to look at if they have any input. You know, I will say, well, we will put the highest priority of input on those we serve and our community partners who also serve people, the same people that we do, just to ensure that people, it's easy to navigate, accessible and user-friendly. You know, some of the other things in noting that is when your website is designed well, and I know this was a priority for Dana, is that it will increase your exposure when you do search engines for mental health. So the more, whenever you redo a website, whenever you add information and when we set up the design, we'll have an opportunity to reorganize and strategize some of our search engine options when people are going to look for assistance. So that, that's another advantage that we have with this website. We hope it improves and increases our awareness and visibility on a virtual platform.
It sounds great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from board members? I see John Paul has a question. Go ahead, John Paul.
I'm sorry, I came in, I missed a portion of it, but I wanted to follow up then. So we selected this vendor then. Was, was there a request for a proposal for this at some point? And then was it a committee that decided on this proposal based on what was said earlier?
Yes, so we issued a RFP back in November and had a committee of internal staff as well as representation from a person served on it.
Okay. Now, when we generally do a request for proposals, is the board involved at any level? Or is there, and I don't remember, maybe you guys did give us notification, but is that, is it like an information item brought to the board beforehand?
That is not something that we have typically done.
Okay. Okay, yeah, because I was just had questions about the process. I know that Dana had mentioned at the last board meeting that something was coming up with regard to our website redesign, but I wasn't aware that we had actually put out a request for a proposal for it. So when I saw it on the, as an item today for the agenda, I was a little surprised. But okay, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dana?
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Yes, you know what, we initially brought this to the board informally, of course. I believe it was back in November. So it's been a long process and it was included also in the budget amendment. I'm not sure if it was one or two, but this is something that, when I started early on, it actually was not user-friendly and I wanted to make sure that we had something that people could actually utilize and get to the information very quickly. And so this was a priority of mine, as Christine mentioned. And so we did have a budget amendment, which included our request for proposal to give vendors that were looked at. And then like Diana said, we wanted to make sure that persons served were part of the review committee and looked at the criteria along with us to make sure that was something that we really, really could use to put us out there and have us be a resource, a real resource for the community and this board as well.
Thank you, Dana. Are there other comments or questions from the board? I'm seeing none. Before we go on.
It's Adam.
Oh, sorry, Adam.
No problem. I just unmuted myself. I'm wondering if the, it may be a good idea to, once the website rolls out or at various points throughout the design process, I'm wondering if, if it would be beneficial to include that in a study session, just food for thought there. That's all.
Great. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Okay, Jonathan has a comment or a question. Go ahead, Jonathan.
I would support that idea as well that Adam just raised on the website.
Excellent. We have that noted. Thank you. That's something we can do.
Wonderful.
Okay, thanks. Before we go on to the next item, why don't we have the board members who join us that missed the roll call, check in with their, the cities that they're checking in from. Oh, but before we move on, it looks like Dr. Hans, did you have another question on the website?
Yes, I had the question about the study session. Now, the study session, will that be like a training? Or is it just learning more about the website or because, you know, IT is not my, my field and I'm just wondering, they're devoting a whole study session to the, to the design of the new website, what purpose does it serve?
Yeah, I think what we would be doing and what that would look like is the consultants and the, well, it's the vendor, when they come in, they're going to help us build out and frame out that website. And what we would do is bring that back to the board and show it. I don't think that that would be something that we would need a whole study session on, just to make sure that, you know, since the board has said that it's important to have some feedback in it, that we can get that from you.
Does that answer your question, Dr. Hans?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Jonathan. To add to that, I would say that I know we're going to be rolling out technology platform to all of the board as well. So those are things that we need to fit into our schedule to make sure we're all hands-on, if you will.
Yep, agreed.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions on the website issue? Hearing none, well, let's have a check-in from the board members and the communities that they are participating from. I don't know what the best way to do that is, if it's to go through the, the roll call of the members who hadn't checked in yet. Can we do that?
I'll go. John Paul Torres, Waterford, Michigan.
Jonathan Landsman, West Bloomfield, Michigan.
Malkaya Newman, Pontiac, Michigan.
Okay, great. Next item on the agenda is our financial review. And Anya, our CFO, is going to present the March 2021 monthly financial trends.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I just didn't want to start after we. All right, you're looking at the March revenue. You can see it continues to be over what we were seeing last year, which is that blue line going across the screen there. Still going in a good trend with eligibility, which is impacting our rates. You can see February included our direct care wage payment. And then I believe it's April through the end of the year will include the remainder of the fiscal year direct care wage increase payment. So it won't be in the lump sums anymore. It'll be distributed each month in our capitation payment. So moving on to the next slide, this is the eligibility trend, which obviously directly impacts our income and continues to go on a good path for our sake, related to revenue. So you can see March last year is when we really saw that pretty big increase. And I know this chart, because it's so, the, the, it goes from 150,000 to 200. It, it looks not as drastic as it is, but for us, it's a significant amount of money that was increased through this time period between now and the end of the fiscal year last year. Moving to the next slide, please. So this is looking at our assets and comparing our assets to what they were at November 30th and the November, I'm sorry, September 30th, and those were not audited yet. So we should have the audit done in a couple of months. But you can see cash and investments is up pretty significantly. Receivables is down a bit. Other assets remains, you know, roughly flat. It's a minimal amount. And then capital assets continue to go down every month. Really, it's a depreciation. Next slide, please. So same thing with liabilities, down significantly from year end, which you would expect. Due to state is roughly flat and that's really just revolving the pools that go on for the quarterly payments we make to them. Employee payables, not too terribly different from the end of the year. And then long-term debt, again, continues to go down related to payments on long-term notes. Next slide. So net income, so this one compares year over year. So this one is looking at March last year versus March this year. You can see our total revenue is up by about $28 million. So that's a pretty significant difference. Total expenses are starting to finally catch up. Remember, we've talked about that several times where they were, they were lagging behind. We're starting to finally get caught up with all of the, the payments that were kind of lagging just due to how we're funding people right now. And then you can also see that net income, this time last year, we were still showing a loss and that's primarily related to the rate issue we had there in the beginning of the year. But you can see it's up significantly in comparison to this time last year. So revenue comparison, you can see that Medicaid revenue is really the, the driver on the increase in revenue. General fund is just slightly less and that is related to a grant we had last year and the continual state rebasing of general fund. County funds remain flat. And then all other, that appears to be an error or I'm not sure what's going on there, why that went from 3 million to 2,000. So I'll have to, I'll have to go back and check on that. That's not what I remember seeing when I reviewed financials. Sometimes when I review financials, things look a little different than when they do when they get in the chart like this. So the, the groupings are a little different. So I'll have to go circle back on that one. Moving on to the next slide. So this is the expense comparison. So you can see administration is down comparatively from last year, but we've talked about why, the different classifications. Provider network, you can see is actually up finally. So that's a good thing. It's up partially because now you're starting to see all of that extra money we're pushing out related to the direct care wage payments and COVID. So the other thing that I noticed in financials is, is community hospitals. The expense for community hospitals is ticking up. So we'll be keeping a close eye on that one. But it's definitely higher than it, than it was last year. Grants is slightly lower, but that primarily is due to timing and a couple of grants that we do not have this year that we did last year. And then all other is roughly the same.
Jonathan has a question.
Yep.
Thank you, Eric. Anya, you mentioned the hospitalizations. Is that, is that reflective of our having a higher increase in utilization of it? Or is that just because it's our share across the state?
No, ours is specific to our utilization of hospitals and hospital days. So it's very specific to us in Oakland County. It's not at all proportional across the state. It's the number of people in Oakland County that are being hospitalized on an inpatient floor.
Okay. And I don't know if this is tied to it or not. Is there still, I mean, obviously we're, we're using it more, but is there also a, still a large wait for availability of beds?
I think there's lots of issues right now with hospitals and, and the ability to get in with, with COVID and the, the population being served, you know, sometimes it's not easy to get them in and it's a lot right now. I mean, you've heard hospitals are a bit overwhelmed. Hopefully that's getting better now with the numbers dropping a bit. But yeah, there's definitely been challenges with hospitalizations and just making sure that that's a seamless process and that's something we're focusing on daily, I would say.
Okay, so this is not just psych beds then? This is hospitalization in general? Or is this our psych?
This is only our psychiatric hospitalizations. That's all we pay for. We don't pay for medical stays.
Okay, thank you.
So net position comparison, again, this one is compared to the end of the fiscal year. So you can see our total assets are up, total liabilities are down, so our net position is up. So all good news there. These are just the same list you always see of our top 15 providers. And with that, I will take any questions. Anyone else have?
Jonathan, do you still have another question?
I do, but I can wait for others to ask questions first. There are.
Thank you. Are there others before Jonathan? Looks like Jonathan is a question.
I have a question. When you say hospital bed, that includes the staffing of that bed, not just a real bed or a real hospital bed, right?
Yeah, when we pay for a hospital day, essentially, it's all-inclusive. That's the only way we contract hospital stays typically. It's very, very rare that we would pay anything outside of the per diem for a hospital stay.
Yeah, so I would think that because of the COVID, it may more than availability of a room or a bed, it's more to do with the staffing issue that the beds are not available and therefore there is a wait for admissions.
Yep, I'm sure that, that has a significant impact on it.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from board members other than Jonathan? I don't mean to pick on Jonathan. Go ahead, Jonathan.
You met your quota, Jonathan, apparently.
No, you got more.
Well, I only have one other question. So you were talking about our revenue being up and our expenses are slowly coming back up to catch up. Where do we stand with our reserves and do you think at this point, I mean, we're, we're in May and I know we're, you know, you're reporting out officially March data, but, but I know you're keeping an eye on May. Do we, you know, in terms of real time, do you think we're going to be able to put money into our reserves or will we have to return a whole heck of a lot of money back to the state?
We never return money. I think I would, there are lots of things we would do before we would return money. So we will not be returning any money. And yes, we should be. So we will not be returning any money. And yes, we should be putting putting some money away this year. So the the most up to date revenue versus expense and therefore the net assets that we'll have were from budget amendment number two. So all combined, I think it was roughly $13 million. But remember, there are some lots of different fund sources going on there. So I want to say off the top of my head, it was roughly 8 million in Medicaid. And then the other fund sources filling in, filling in. Ideally, you know, we will build up our Medicaid reserves again because when, and I'd say when, not if we have difficult budget years, we need to make sure that we have those resources available again. So I do I do plan to have money to put away this year. That we will be putting some money away from from fiscal year 20, I'm sorry, what are we in, 21?
21.
The prior year as well. It's not as much as I had hoped, but there's a couple of things impacting that related to how we're having to book retro eligibility and things like that. I won't bore you all with that. But yes, the really short answer to that question would have been yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
And I'll reserve my last question for another topic.
You got plenty of questions available, Jonathan. I had one question. When it, when we look at the 2021, 20 expenses compared to the 2021 expenses, you and Jonathan had both acknowledged that they're coming more in line with each other. Can we expect as we go through the year then for April 2021 to start exceeding the expenses from the previous year? And as we go through the calendar year, that our expenses would exceed the expenses from 2021?
So to some degree, yes, because we will have a full year of the direct care wage increase this fiscal year, and last year we did not. So last year, I think the the state didn't start theirs until April. We started ours in March just preemptively. So there's definitely going to be an increased expense related to that. Now, remember, that's a wash because they are funding it. But as it relates to expenses outside of that, I do think we're going to see expenses in in areas with direct care staff. And now even the the professional staff. It's, you know, staffing is rough in in basically every industry right now. So we're going to see issues with that and because we're going to end up paying overtime. And so we still have our residential providers on cost reimbursed contracts. And any of the other providers that really have that level of staff are on cost reimbursed. So what happens, and I'll try to be a little briefer than I was the last time, is that when they don't have enough staff, the staff they do have have to work overtime. And then we have to pay for that. So the, again, short answer would have been yes.
Thank you. Hey, we need the we need the elaborate.
I can talk about this stuff for hours. You all will be asleep.
Well, yeah, it was short enough to keep us awake, though. Does that, and that wraps up your presentation on the financial review?
Financials, yes.
Okay, if there are no other questions, we can go on to the next item on our agenda, which is OCHN's starting wage pilot, and Anya is gonna present that as well.
So we've talked to you guys about this several times at this point, and I think our original estimate was a few months ago to be able to roll this out. But, you know, we we've gotten to the point where we're, we sent out the request for participation for a a direct care wage pilot where each staff starts out at a minimum of a certain dollar amount. So initially, it was 15. I think we're reconsidering that number right now just because of the feedback we've gotten. And when you look at the market, how the market has changed since we originally kind of decided to do this. So, you know, we're pulling together some information with the markets that would be competing with this with this group of staff. And so we'll come up with a final amount, but the intent is to have a pilot that is six months to 12 months long, potentially up to 10 individual providers. And and trying to see really does adjusting the wage where people walk in at and doing some other things like that really impact the delivery of service, the amount of turnover, and all of those types of things that that we hear are issues related to direct staff shortages and direct staff turnover and those types of things. So right now, we're in the very beginning, beginning stages. We've sent out the request for participation. When we get that back in, which is due in mid-June, we'll we'll look at it and evaluate what providers give us the best sample and have the best ability to kind of demonstrate this for us. So trying to minimize the variables and trying to make sure we have a good population representation, staff representation, so that we can get really the best data from this to determine, is this actually going to to solve any problems? We we've always heard that more money is going to fix this. So rather than continue to just throw that out there with no no actual data to support that, we're going to try it. So as we move through this, we'll bring you more updates. Like I said, I just wanted to make you aware that we did send the request for participation out. It's due back to us around mid-June, and we'll give you an update as we move forward.
Malkaya, you have a comment or a question?
Thank you, Eric, and thank you, Anya. I really appreciate the staff being forward thinking like this. And I'm really excited to see this pilot roll out. I'm just wondering, what are the target populations that you're looking at in terms of persons served?
Oh, our intent is to get a sample of really everybody we can. So we do plan to do persons with ADD, and we also do plan to do persons with mental illnesses. So again, trying to make sure we're we're getting as as much data as we can on both populations. And is there a difference? Did it impact one versus the other in different ways? So trying to be all encompassing, but also recognizing, you know, we can only do so much right now because it is going to cost us more money. My hope is, is that there is an offset, reducing turnover, reducing overtime and those types of things. My hope would be that we'll see some savings from that and then some long term savings from a turnover perspective. And people receiving better services from more 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 seasoned staff.
I really think that this is going to make a big difference. So thank you, Anya.
Yeah.
Are there other comments or questions from board members? The only question that I have, Anya, is how many, you said 10 service providers, how many total employees?
So it would really depend on the the homes that end up being included. Could be a four person home, could be a fifth person home. So it could, it just, it will depend. So the staffing ratios are slightly different for for those two different scenarios. If it's a home that has some individuals with with higher needs in it, the staffing patterns may be higher. It might not be the standard two on mornings, days, two on afternoons, and one on nights. It might be two all the way around. So it really will depend on the on the homes that are selected and the individuals that live in that home.
So our budgeted plan allows for a situation where we don't have to restrict that, which is nice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We planned to make sure that we had the flexibility to to make this meaningful and not to restrict it based on things like that.
Okay, great. Without any objection, we will go on to number three on our agenda, policy management. And we're going to get our quarterly update from Marquita Massey.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight I am going to give you an update on the status of a couple of goals that are assigned to the quality and regulatory compliance team. So those goals fall into the areas of audit and accreditation and meeting MDHHS contract requirements. On this slide here is a diagram of the staffing within the team. There are several different staff titles within this team. We have quality analysts, we have audit specialists, we have audit analysts, and there's a manager of quality management. And there's also a provider network analyst. Next slide, please. Within our team, responsibilities are pertaining to quality improvement and policy management. So we manage the policy coordination process. We coordinate and facilitate external reviews and accreditation, conduct quality audits of the residential sites. I'm also responsible for corporate compliance and HIPAA privacy. Some of the other initiatives within the team are the ensuring compliance with the home and community-based services rules. I'm going to be talking a little bit more about that later. NCQA activity is ramping up right now. We have our review, our re-review scheduled for next year. The assessment of satisfaction of persons served also falls into my area. One of my staff members provided an update to the board this past November. So we will be doing that again before the end of the fiscal year. And then the last bullet on here is the MDHHS performance indicators. So the performance indicators are reported quarterly. So tonight I'm going to be giving you an update on outcomes from the first quarter reporting. Next slide, please. So in terms of our strategic plan pertaining to audit and accreditation, I'm going to give you an overview of where we are and the prep efforts with NCQA preparations. So our document submission date is next May, May 31, 2022. So right now, we are in the look back period for many of our standards. So we're preparing efforts for that. Our actual onsite review is going to be July 2022. And just to highlight some of the current activities that are going on right now, I'm going to talk a little bit about practitioner and organizational credentialing, utilization management, denial audits, and care coordination. So in terms of provider credentialing, the NCQA requirements are very prescriptive. They require that certain timelines be met from the point of a practitioner's submission of their application to when an actual decision is made. The the timeframe previously under NCQA was 180 days. The state is going to be moving to 90 days, so there is an adjustment that had to be made there. The NCQA requirements also look very closely at primary source verification of education, certification, practitioner's licensing. All that documentation has to be checked within certain timeframes. There has to be a credentialing committee in place, which we have. The credentialing committee is responsible for providing final review and approval of any files that are presented for credentialing. So basically, any practitioner within the network goes through this credentialing process. And the credentialing process has to have involvement, document an involvement of our medical director and other practitioners within the network. And before I move on, I do want to say I did build into this presentation some pause points to answer questions because there's quite a bit of information that I'm going to be going over tonight. So moving on to the organizational credentialing piece, this is coordinated. You can bounce back to the next slide.
Jonathan has his hand up.
Okay, so I'm going to use my last question. Probably. Marquita, you mentioned something about credentialing of the providers. I know we provided for all of our direct and our core providers across the network, if you will. Do we use CAQH to do the credentialing? Or how do we, how do we do a background check on providers?
We do not use CAQH right now. The credentialing function is a delegated function to the provider network that we have oversight over. So we do retrospective audits to verify that they've met all the requirements. That's for practitioner credentialing. For organizational credentialing, which is a function that's handled by the provider network team, we do do that here. There's an individual that's primarily responsible for vetting any provider that requests entry into our network, and then we do re-credentialing. So we're looking at all the requirements to make sure that any provider has an actual license, that they're not sanctioned, checking their rights background, and ensuring that they're in compliance with the HCBS rules.
Okay, so if there's a substantiated rights issue with a with a staff working in one place and they're discharged, we're still able to, either through our delegation or directly, we're stable, able to track them to ensure they don't start working at another site?
Well, our providers per contract are required to get a clearance from, directly from OCHN before they hire a direct care staff. So they they do that. So that's built in, and it's been in place for several years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I, thank you, Jonathan. You kind of, we kind of talked about organizational credentialing already. But what that really is, is it's basically ensuring that a provider meets all the requirements for holding a, for OCHN holding a contract with that provider. So it addresses all those elements I just spoke about. Licensing, that they don't have any sanctions, that they're available for participation in a federally funded program. So we're checking like the OIG exclusion list to make sure that that they're cleared and good to go for that. And every two years, providers, as well as practitioners, are required to go undergo a re-credentialing process. The next bullet that I want to talk about here is utilization management denial audits. So that's an area that NCQA looks at very heavily. There are must pass items in there. So what that means is that there's a problem and you don't meet full compliance with that element, then you're, you would have to go through a corrective action plan process before you could be awarded your accreditation status from NCQA. So currently, our staff are reviewing the denial notices to ensure that they're meeting all the requirements. So those requirements include that they're, the notice to the person includes a legal basis for the decision, that the reason for the denial is in easily understandable language to the person served. It provides the person with the right to speak with the practitioner who made the decision. It has to be issued within required timeframes from when the decision was made. And because this is such an important item that we want to ensure that we are continually in compliance with, we have ongoing audits to ensure that we're meeting the requirements. We're doing well with that right now, but we can't let up. We have to continue to audit to ensure that we are continuing to meet those requirements. The last bullet on this slide speaks to care coordination, which is another area in the NCQA standards that is heavily scrutinized. So the highlights that I want to talk about tonight pertain to two care coordination projects. The one is related to care coordination across the behavioral health system. So that's within our our network. And then the other item pertains to care coordination between behavioral health and medical medical care. So in regards to coordination of behavioral health coordination within our system, we're looking to ensure that communication occurs between inpatient providers and the community providers. So the kind of information that needs to be provided is information pertaining to a person's current medications that they're on, their current allergies, any past effective meds. This has been an area where our data has shown that we need to work to improve. So this is an area that has been a bit challenging. Not all hospitals participate in ADTs, admission discharge and the provision of admission discharge and transfer data. So that makes it a little challenging. But we are, we have shown some improvement, still have a bit of work to do. Some of the interventions that have been occurring in this area relate to having weekly provider meetings. And for those that are using ADTs to provide better, to start utilizing those ADTs better. Our providers in the network do have access to ADTs in Odin. So that is a tool that's available to them. So we, you know, encourage that they use those tools to drive improvement. The second area of care coordination pertains to coordination between behavioral health and medical care. So this is something that our OCHN nurses work with. So a couple of the areas that they are working with to ensure that we are meeting requirements here involve developing a shared care plan with the OCHN and the health plans. So this is done by identifying a stratified sample of individuals with high needs. So they're looking at people that have had more than six or more ED visits in the past six months and individuals with at least one chronic healthcare condition. So they are developing care plans that would jointly create a plan to address the needs of these individuals. They meet, the nurses meet weekly with the Medicaid health plans to discuss these cases, and they're looking at 20 cases per month. Another activity that is happening in that area is looking at persons with complex health needs. And these are people with chronic healthcare conditions, again, that have an absence of any visits with a primary care physician and that have had multiple ER visits. So our data has shown that the interventions that have been implemented to address this has actually been impactful. Back when we initially began to look at this, we set a goal to ensure that ER visits for persons served within the system, thirty, with these, that met the criteria, 39% or less would be in having ER visits. From 2018, when we set our baseline, the baseline data was at 44%. Most recently, our data has shown that we're now at 36%. So that means that there has been some improvement there. That's eight percentage points still where there's still room for improvement. The goal has been met. The goal was 39%. So with that type of progress, we may be able to revise our goal to look for even more positive outcomes with that. So some of the interventions that have, that were actually implemented to actually impact that measure. The nurses send out letters to persons served with bipolar and schizophrenia, encouraging the individuals to have a PCP visit and providing honor as a resource for persons to engage with to have a follow-up visit. They've also had monthly meetings with Medicaid health clients to continue with coordination for these high-risk individuals, which has proven to be very successful. And also providing education to case managers on these chronic healthcare conditions so they can provide education to these individuals served. We can move on to the next slide. And this slide focuses on, I see a hand up from Malkaya. I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Malkaya.
I'm sorry, Marquita, I didn't know you were going to move on.
Go ahead.
The last, back to the last slide. I wanted to talk, ask a question about care coordination. Since we don't provide direct services, you did mention that there is some training that's going on with the case managers. But what is the other involvement of the core agencies since they're the ones that are actually servicing the people that we serve?
So our core agencies are part of our integrated healthcare committee work group. So they, persons from all the core provider agencies sit on that committee. The nurses bring data to that group and they are charged with actually going back to their agencies and working through on activities to help to improve these, or what we call our HEATUS rates on these types of things. We also have practitioners that sit on the medical directors advisory group where we also share performance data. So, and we seek feedback from these persons to ask them for ideas on what we might do to actually implement actions system-wide. So no, we don't directly provide the services, but we do have a role in leading and trying to enforce some systemic improvement across the network.
But I'm also wondering how much that impacts the workload of the case managers. I don't know if there's been, because that's something that I've asked about before, if we have an idea of what the caseload sizes are, what's involved in that?
It, it is an additional task, but that's the path that, you know, we are expected to do that. I know that this is common. I mean, I remember years ago when we, it first became a thing to focus on integrated care. There was, the thing was they're separate, but we're not separate. We have to treat the whole person. That's, you know, really the role of the case manager because what's impactful on the mental illness side is also impactful on the physical health side. So, I mean, that's an expectation of performance for anybody in the system providing supports, coordination, or case management.
Well, I do understand it's an expectation. My question is, are we as an agency looking at the impact of the, what we're asking case managers to do? And maybe this isn't the form to have that discussion, but I have been concerned about that and concerned about that for some time because we can keep asking for more. But what are we doing in the meantime to make sure that they're able to do what we're asking them to do? Because that's tied in, and that's tied into the, the funding models as well, am I correct? With targeted case management?
Uh, I believe so.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll hold that for another conversation.
I've taken, I've taken a note on that. You know, it's important for the case managers to have appropriate training and to understand. But yeah, I, I've jotted that down and that's something that we can take a look at.
Thank you.
This is Hadas. I had two questions. I don't know if anyone can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Okay, so the first thing is following up on Malkaya was talking about. I, it's come up a few times. I was wondering if we can devote a study session to Malkaya's concerns? And, and really, it's important, you know, that we support the case managers, that we really dig down deep and find out what it is that OCHN can do or what they haven't done. So I don't know, that's a request for a study session topic. And then the second thing is regarding reaching out to the individuals through the mail. Is there another way aside from the mail to reach out to them? I know you said that they, you know, you do the, the mail. And the mail to me just seems so old school. Not, I mean, it seems like we should be doing more than mail. So I don't know, just a suggestion.
The nurse also contact people through phone calls as well. So yes, I, I agree with you. The mail these days is very slow and not very predictable. So that's not their only measure for reaching out to people.
And do they do texting and that kind of thing?
They do, I don't believe they do texting.
Yeah. I don't know, that's something to consider too. I just find that when I work with certain, just different populations respond differently to different forms of communication. Just a thought.
Yeah, I don't believe they do that. Thank you.
Dana, did you have something?
I did. I just wanted to get clarity because I know Malkaya, you have asked that question before. And are you speaking to caseload ratios, like the, the caseload or a number of people they serve per case manager or supports coordinator? And wondering what that looks like? Are you speaking to that in a way?
Yes, that's part of the issue. But when I hear, you know, when I'm at the table and I hear, well, we're having the case managers do this, we're having the case managers do that. I, I haven't heard definitively that we're looking at everything that we're requiring the staff to do. And, and I know that it is stressful. It is stressful on everybody right now. And it, and COVID only exacerbated the issues. But I've been concerned about this for a very long time. I don't know where that background noise is coming from, but I have asked maybe that we could do a day in the life of a support coordinator, case manager, so that we can see at the board level, what is, you know, what is their job? What are they required to do? And are we being realistic in our expectations? Because I've, I've heard over and over again in meetings, well, let the case manager educate about this. Let the case manager, supports coordinators do that. And I'm like, okay, when are they going to do all of that? When some of them have caseload sizes? I don't know, especially now that we're not in the office. I can't even speak to caseload sizes. But I have, I know that there's been frustration in this area, and that's why I keep coming back to it.
Okay, well, I will definitely take that back because that is something that I'm concerned about as well as clinical practice and outcomes and looking at how that's impacting the quality of service. And then also having programs that are sustainable. So if we're setting ourselves up and our, the, the network up, unrealistic expectations of what they can come up with in terms of outcomes for people, then that is definitely something that we will look into and get back to you on. And then also I want to respond to Ms. Hadas. Part of the issue with reaching out is, like you said, the email and the snail mail, which Christine taught me about snail mail is very slow, of course. But we also want to make sure that we're reaching people who don't have access to telephones and email. And so the other part of that, and I've been doing a lot of work in terms of working with the Oakland County Health Department, is that we're going to partner with them to figure out ways that we can show up in the community together. Because often you either see one or the other. And if we're really talking about integrated health, I want to make sure that we're understanding that when the health department goes out, we want to have somebody in the community that represents behavioral health as well. So that's something I'm really going to start pushing as the, we open up more and do more in-person services. So when the Oakland County Health Department is out in the community and also being more engaged with our providers, that we are also having a presence and doing real outreach in the communities where we know people need our services and supports. So I hope that answers a little bit, but those are part of the plans as we open up some more. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, that was a great explanation. Sorry.
Okay, if we can go to the next slide. Okay, so this slide is again speaking to an area that is required by NCQA, and it pertains to the practitioner and provider directory. So right now, at present, you can, you, the public, anyone who accesses our website can search by an individual provider or a practitioner. The location of, as to where it's located on our website is listed here. The link's down below. Highlight if the person is looking for a service organization or a practitioner. And right beneath that, there is a link for anyone that happens to visit the directory to let us know if the directory was helpful. So that feedback is important because we want to hear from people to know if, if it's meaningful and if it's helpful. And with our new website revamping, this will have a similar link there to obtain feedback from persons served as well. Can move on to the next slide. This slide pertains to the goal area of meeting the state contract requirements specific to home and community-based services. The compliance date, the federal compliance date has been extended. It was initially March of 2022. It has been extended to March of 2023 at this time due to the pandemic. What is happening right now to ensure that we are, as a state, are ready to meet those compliance requirements are the three bullets that are listed here. The corrective action plan work has been completed for our initial survey respondents from both persons served that may have completed the survey and for the providers. These surveys were initially completed several years ago. So right now, the activity that's occurring is there is confirmation of all the provider responses and individual responses to confirm whether or not a respondent should have been categorized in the category of heightened scrutiny. And what heightened scrutiny means is that this is a provider that it appears, based on the survey responses, that services are provided in a isolative setting, that there are restrictions and persons don't have the freedoms to come and go as they please and to be really involved in the community. So in order to determine if a provider site should really be, continue to be in heightened scrutiny, there are activities that have to occur in regards to reviewing the plans of services, interviewing persons served, and having attestations of the persons' centered plans, attesting that there are no restrictions in the plans. We are also being required to perform a re-validation of compliance survey responses by, from the state. So what this means is that several years ago, when a provider or an individual completed the survey, if at that time, the survey outcome did not appear that there were any restrictions on the plan, we are being asked by the department to go back in and reconfirm that that is still the case, that there are no restrictions on the person's plan, that persons have the freedoms to come and go as they choose, that they chose to actually live in this location, and that they're choosing their own service providers. And the last bullet here speaks to the heightened scrutiny review committee. So what this committee is, is a committee that was formed by the state to review the survey responses that placed a respondent into the heightened scrutiny category. So persons on the heightened scrutiny review committee receive So persons on the hidden scrutiny review committee receive a sample of survey files that they have to review. The survey files are blinded, so you aren't able to tell which PIHP, a survey response, is connected to, or which provider site. The only thing that you're provided with are the actual survey responses. So the members on the hidden scrutiny review committee are reviewing those survey responses and making a determination on those responses to determine whether or not the responses appear to be restrictive in nature. And that information is then sent to the state, and the state would be aggregating all that information and then sending it to CMS for a final determination. So all this has to be done before March of 2023 to ensure that we are in compliance with the federal requirements for HCBs. If a provider is not in compliance with HCBs by that time, they will no longer be able to receive Medicaid funding for services. And we can move to the next slide now. So are there any questions on any of that information thus far? Okay, we can move on to the next slide. This slide also talks about the strategic and annual plan goal that pertains to meeting compliance with the MDHHS contract and is specific to compliance with the performance indicators. So what I'm going to talk about in the next few slides are the performance outcomes for the quarter ending December 31st, which is the first quarter. We submit the performance indicators three months after the end of the quarter. That's to allow for enough time for any corrections and data preparation efforts that need to occur. So for the first quarter, we met the standard for all the indicators. Indicator one is the timeliness for inpatient screening indicator. And this indicator looks at if a decision was made to determine whether or not a individual needed hospitalization within 180 minutes. In regards to this indicator, there are some logic changes that are going to need to occur. This is needed because there is, there was an additional unit opened at Common Ground where emergency assessments are being completed. So we will have to ensure that that logic adjustment is included in the calculations of the performance indicators going forward. That was not previously included because this was a new unit that was just opened at Common Ground. The second indicator that's here is the indicator two that looks at timeliness from the first request for services to assessment. The state has removed the standard for this, so there is no standard for this anymore. The standard previously was 95%. The previous performance standard allowed exceptions to be removed. So exceptions are things that would include a reschedule or a no-show for an appointment. Previously, we were allowed to remove those indicators from the performance indicators from, for standard number two. We can move on to the next slide. Okay, so this is our trend report on Table One, which is the timeliness for inpatient screening. We met the quarter for both children and adults for the previous, for quarter one. Prior to that, we did have some performance issues. So with, because of that, we had implemented a practice where Common Ground is now reporting performance outcomes to us on a weekly basis versus waiting into the, end of the quarter to report performance outcomes to us. So by reporting performance outcomes on a weekly basis, any corrections and data that need to be made can happen timely so that at the end of the quarter, there's not a mad rush to work to come into compliance. Most of these types of errors pertain to the designation of AM or PM on a start and stop time because that could make a really big difference and throw a record out of compliance with this indicator. We can move to the next slide. So this slide shows the performance on indicator number two, which is timeliness to the first assessment. You can see that after quarter two and fiscal year 20, performance declined. And that was because the, that was the point where the ability to remove exceptions were, that was taken away. So the reason the department did that is because they were required to do that by CMS because we really wanted, they wanted, really wanted to get a good look at the true performance and to be able to eventually get to the point of analyzing the reasons behind the categories of exceptions. The department has not revisited that yet, but we are still connecting, collecting that data. So at this point, we're, like I said, we're still looking. We are not collecting any, or requiring any corrective action plan from the providers at this point, but we are continuing to look at this, and there will be more analysis done. We can move on to the next slide. This slide is actually, it's mislabeled. It should read assessment to the start of ongoing service. And you can look at our trend data. Historically, we've not ever had any problems with this indicator. This indicator looks at the time that a person has their intake assessment to the ongoing, first ongoing service. Our intake assessment and the start of ongoing services typically starts on the same day with treatment planning. So that's a major factor in why there is no concerns with this indicator. We can move on to the next slide. This slide looks at continuity of care. And I am not seeing the slide. I will continue, but I am not seeing the slide. I'm not sure if that's showing for others as well. Okay, so this looks at continuity of care. On the left side of the screen, you can see the trend information on follow-up after hospital discharge. The standard for this is 95%. And then on the right side, you can see the continuity of care data for persons that have been discharged from a substance abuse detox unit. And the standard is that the individuals are seen within seven days. There were no performance issues for this standard. And for the behavioral health side, you can see that there was a slight drop in performance for the adults for quarter two. And for quarter three, there was, we were also slightly below the standard. There is no ability to be able to round up for these indicators. But for both quarters four and for quarter one, the standard was met. And I will pause here because I see a question.
Yeah, hi, this is Bijaya. I just have a question. Although we are meeting in general the benchmark for continuity of care after hospital discharge, but the graph for the, I believe it's substance use disorder, it's kind of zigzag. Why is that?
That's just the way the trend line is for that. It's, we met the standard. You can see the rates beneath each data point. It's just the way it's displayed. Does that answer your question?
Yes and no, because if you look at the adults, adults is kind of steady. It's the pink line. But for children, it's up and down. And I would expect that there might be a barrier either with the process or with the provider. Why would that like drastically dip from 97.3 to 93.5? It's almost a drop of four points or four and a half points. So that is something that I'm curious about.
Markita, this is Nicole, and I can weigh in if you would like. With our Children's Network, Dr. Hans, we have so few children that actually go into the hospital, which is a really great thing, that one child can actually swing, swing our numbers one way or the other above or below the trend line.
Yeah, so one, so does that have to do with any one factor? I mean, can we identify? I mean, it's probably more analytical, but I'm just, from a physician's perspective, I'm just curious, why would that be?
So the most-
Whether or not we are meeting a benchmark, if the trend is steady, that is kind of, you know, a little reassuring, then we can look at the big picture. But when there is a zigzag, then you have to really go into the nitty-gritty of it. That's just my perspective as a clinician.
Sure. And I can say that the, the most common aspects or reasons that I'm aware of are usually around scheduling for the family. So you know, when you've got a kiddo and they go into the hospital and you're spending time trying to engage with the hospital, trying to pick them up and move them back and forth, a lot of times, and the family doesn't have a ton of flexibility to do those follow-up appointments right when the kiddo gets home with a doc or with somebody else. So sometimes we miss that, that window. And it's usually around trying to accommodate the family's schedule. So, you know, there's a little bit of a zigzag there. But like I said, just those four, two to four percentage points could really be one youth whose family, for whatever reason, had a hard time coming in for that appointment.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we can move on to the next slide. This slide here looks at inpatient recidivism. Recidivism has declined significantly, which is really a good thing. The standard with the state is, recidivism has to be 15% or less. What this looks at is readmissions within 30 days of discharge. So from looking at the data, I've also taken a look at data across other PIHPs. It also appears that for several of our counterparts, recidivism has declined also. One anecdotal reason could pretty much likely be due to the pandemic. Persons are reluctant to go to the hospitals. We also talked about a shortage of beds, hospital beds. So we are currently working to address some of those issues with the hospitals. And those interventions include using the CRU and partial hospitals as options. Our utilization review and clinical analyst staff have been assigned to work directly with CPAs to try to divert persons from hospitalization when appropriate. And Common Ground can also now offer enhanced rates for persons that are of a higher acuity. It previously used to be 72 hours if they're, if they were unable to find a bed for an individual. It is now 24 hours. So there are some interventions that have been taking place with this to be able to address the hospital bed concerns. And I do see a question.
Yeah, this is Eric. I just wondered if we track those for the substance use disorder community and what that would look like, just for that community alone.
Yeah, that is not one of the indicators that we report on. Though there would be individuals with SUD included in this population. But it's not a specific indicator that we report on.
So we don't track it separately?
We do not track it separately. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Is there a way that we can track it separately?
Well, the concern is, is that we don't receive the, because of 42 CFR, we don't receive the information on admissions and discharges for persons with substance use disorders.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay, we can move to the next slide. So are there any additional questions at this point? Okay. I still see a hand up, but I don't know if that's from previously or if that's a new hand. Okay. So these last few slides are just going to talk about, it also addresses the area of meeting MDHHS program requirements, contract requirements. And it's focusing on our corporate compliance activity. So this focuses on high, a high-level summary of activities that occurred in the first quarter of FY '21. Every quarter, we have to report summary data to the state's Office of Inspector General on any types of compliance activities that have happened. The primary goal, one of the primary goals of this area, the Officer of Inspector General, is to be able to recover improper payments and to be able to direct, to direct those payments back to services. So in the first quarter, you can see in the column highlighted activity type, the several types of activities that have occurred in the quarter. The second quarter talks about information source. This is where the issue generated from. And then the third column talks about a brief description of what happened. So the issue pertaining to overpayment was a practitioner that did not have the completed training and credentials to be able to practice independently. That was reported to us by our provider. We were required to recoup the payments that were made to that provider for those services. The next row speaks about data mining activity. And what data mining is, is a post-payment review of data to determine if there's any inaccuracies or any payments that might have been made that should not have been made. So this was done, the information source was through a desk audit, and we identified some overlapping services provided by a couple of different providers that require recruitment of Medicaid funds. So an example of that would be if a person was in the hospital and in error, a provider also reported that the person was in specialized residential. Of course, that can't happen, so that's an identified overpayment. The next row talks about complaints and referrals. This was a referral that was sent to us by the state's OIG office, and it was a complaint from a former employee of a provider agency who made an allegation that staff were providing, unqualified staff were providing services. So this required an investigation to be implemented. We did investigate that. We did investigate that, that specific allegation was unsubstantiated. But we did find some issues where there could have been better um documentation. So as a result of that, there were also some uh recruitments of funds that had to be uh recovered from that provider. And then the last row here speaks about um audits that were completed. These were uh claims verification audits that are required to be done annually per our contract with the state. Um, as a result of those audits, we found some um concerns where there was some recruitment of Medicaid funds required. All services have to be um authorized in the plan of services and provided by qualified staff and documented appropriately in the record. So if all those things aren't addressed, then there's recruitment that has to happen. So we can move on to the next slide. Uh, this slide just speaks about some additional um internal activity that had happened within the quarter, pertaining to HIPAA privacy, um overpayment and improper billing. And then uh one other issue that pertained to a provider that had a delay in um completing their paperwork. So there was a corrective action that was done there. And I'm gonna pause again because I see a hand.
Thank you, Marquita. Uh, on the last slide, it talked about a desk audit. What exactly is a desk audit? I don't remember seeing that term before.
Um, so that's something that you can do from your desk. We, you don't have to go out to the provider to do it. The um information and reports are um sent to you or you can access it through um data that we have available at our desktops. So that's what that is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we can move on to the next slide. Um, um, just if we could back up for a second. Most of uh the types of issues that have come our way that are reported under HIPAA privacy pertain to uh misdirecting email, uh, unencrypted email, anytime an email is sent and it contains uh P H I, which is protected health information, it has to be encrypted. So if it's encrypted, that means that the email can't be intercepted and um basically broken into by external sources. So it's important that um staff practice encrypting any um emails. And there were also some issues of documents that were misfiled in uh records. So that's basically um a HIPAA issue as well. So we can move on to the next slide. So when these types of issues are reported, there, um, of course, we have to require corrective action and um some type of intervention to try to reduce the future occurrences of these sort of um incidents. So outlined on this slide are just some of the activities that have been done to be able to address these things. We've done training, required supervisors to do um training to the staff based on the nature of the uh service or the issue that was reported, uh, providing additional, additional counseling and coaching, coaching to staff pertaining to the protection of P H I and um to strengthening our credentialing protocols for new hires and ensuring that new staff aren't uh going to be impaneled until required credentials are verified. So that was a corrective action that was uh enacted by the uh the provider that was involved in a compliance issue. So we can move on to the next slide. Okay, so I believe that is my last slide. Are there any other questions?
Dr. Hans, go ahead.
Yeah, that is, um, I, I'm just wondering about, follow-up to Eric's question about the lack of available data on the, our discharges on substance use uh, uh population. Um, I, I'm just curious, how does it impact that lack of data? Because if we don't have that data, how do we uh then impact the outcomes of these uh interventions such as hospitalization, which is uh actually, you know, quite costly? So I, I'm just wondering about that. If you could elaborate a little bit on that, perhaps you can answer that.
And that, that's a very good question. It's, it's a challenge because we don't hear about these, we don't find out about these discharges uh timely. It's uh like a retrospective type of a report. And mainly, it's due to uh the confidentially confidentiality requirements around substance use information. Um, the health plans have that data, but um as the P H P, we don't have access to that data. And that is um a very interesting uh barrier because there is a performance incentive that the department has assigned to all the P I H Ps that pertain to follow-up on, follow-up of um care for uh substance use um hospitalizations from, for discharges. So it, it's a challenge. Um, we don't get the A D Ts, as I mentioned earlier, as we do on the behavioral health side. So um, I don't know, Nicole, if you have anything else you'd like to add to that?
Uh, no, I, we are regularly addressing it with the, the state related to some of that. Um, we do have it, like Marquita said, on the back end in terms of the C C three sixty data set, but that's usually, there's such a lag there that it's not actionable. Um, so we are really working closely with the department to try and clarify some of that.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for Marquita? Okay, um, and does that wrap up your report then, Marquita?
Yes, thank you.
It is a, uh, it's a lot to go over. Um, we really appreciate your attention to all the details that you presented uh to the board tonight. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, next on our agenda, uh, we're gonna hear from Dr. Wa, Dr. Lawson on our program compliance.
Yes, thank you and good evening, everybody. Um, I'm very excited to go over the draft needs assessment with you all this year. Um, if we can go to the next slide. So just a- Um, as it relates to the annual needs, um, the results of this assessment are then used to develop our annual plan for the next fiscal year. And tonight, I'll review the assessment questions. Um, we'll make any changes as directed or suggested by the board as soon as possible this week. And then a revised assessment will be sent to you in your packet for the full board meeting um and then placed on the agenda for approval next, um, next week. So if we go to the next slide, uh, once the assessment itself is approved, it's going to be distributed as far and wide as possible to collect meaningful feedback from the people we support, their family, friends, allies, um, our providers, our staff, as well as our larger community. This slide lists some of the ways that we're planning to conduct outreach this year. Um, I also wanted to note that last year, our responses were underrepresented of the Black and African-American community as well as the Asian community. So in order to make sure that we have ample and appropriate opportunity for everybody to participate, uh, our communications team has been working really hard to come up with a plan. Um, and we're gonna be seeking out every community page, webpage, social group um that we can that's associated with those communities and sharing uh our annual needs assessment. We're also planning to direct mail about eight thousand postcards into neighborhoods that have higher population densities of those community members. Um, and then we'll mail hard copies and return envelopes to the people we support as well as our direct support staff at our residential homes again this year. If we go to the next slide, um, so in addition to the efforts that I noted, uh, we're going to host a public forum again this year. We'll attend as many meetings and events um as we can get ourselves invited to, to discuss our services and to learn what people would like to see us focus on. As we get the surveys in, we'll compile and analyze the data so that we can focus our efforts on additional mailing or postings to groups who might be underrepresented in this year's response prior to the survey closing. Um, the only other note I wanted to have is that if someone receives a postcard or they learn about the survey, but they don't have internet access, um, they can call our customer services department. And our customer services staff will either walk them through the survey and complete it on their behalf. They'll mail them a hard copy with a self-addressed stand envelope, um, or they'll just simply collect their feedback and make sure that we receive it. Next slide. Uh, once the survey closes, we're gonna analyze the data. And then, like I said a little earlier, we're gonna use that to draft our annual plan for fiscal year twenty-two. Um, that draft is then presented to the committee of the whole and the board provides directions for changes to that plan. We make any changes at the board's direction and then present it to all of you for final approval at the fourth board meeting in September. Um, so that's just a quick review of the process and how we intend to disseminate and distribute the survey. Are there any questions up to this point?
I have a question. So for the, for the communities uh that uh were underrepresented or other minority communities, um, have we considered um additional uh to produce the surveys uh in, in other languages? So that they can, uh, people that are not primarily English-speaking would have a chance to um understand and complete the survey?
That is a very good question, and I'm gonna defer that to Christine Burke to check in on our translation services for that.
We can have it translated primarily, it would be in Spanish and Arabic. Usually, those are the top two languages that we um translate. We do let people know that it's available upon request, especially when we're working with the larger agencies, when they're asking them to help us distribute it. But I really like that idea and, and that's something we could do rather quickly. It only takes a few days to get a document translated.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we're gonna move right into the survey, and this is the introduction. It will be the same for everyone who uh chooses to take our survey. And the next slide is the introduction, again, just continued. Um, I do wanna note that we are still looking at calendars and we're timing our public forum for the draft review of the plan. Um, so those dates are gonna be finalized before the board meeting next week. And the next question, uh, just everything starts off with a general question so that we understand who's taking the survey. And if I were to select, um, and then what kind of services I received. So if I had selected that I was a person receiving services um or the loved one of a person receiving services. So if we go to the next slide, um, the following questions are all gonna be questions that we would ask a person who's actively receiving services. So, next one, the next two slides are gonna cover different aspects of service delivery and supports for people. One more slide ahead, please. Thank you. Um, and again, we just use these responses to gauge where our strengths may lie and where we might have gaps that we need to fill. Just pause there for a second. So this slide that's up right now, this question was new last year. Um, and we left it, and again, this year, we wanna see if the pandemic has had any impact on how quickly people are linked to our services once um they have been screened by our access team. And the next slide um is another question to engage how important areas of people's lives are. Um, and then that just helps us to shape our focus and how we can further support people in these areas. Um, last year, we were looking at whether or not people had transitioned to telehealth and if they did, how well that transition went. So this year, we've changed the question up just a little bit to see how many people wanna continue having telehealth as an option. Um, and if there are people who want the option but might have barriers to access. So if someone were to click that third radio button, I wanted to use telehealth but was unable to, we would direct them to this next slide. And it, the survey will branch out. And so these are just to help us understand the barriers that people are experiencing so we can help to plan around equitable access for everybody that we support um so that they can participate in services in whichever way they decide is best for them. And the next slide, um, we certainly know that our data and in talking with our providers, that more people are experiencing um what we would call a crisis or in need of crisis services. And so we wanted to assess our current crisis continuum uh to see where our strengths lie and where we might have any gaps. And we wanted to make sure that we continue to be a full safety net and that we don't have people slipping through any gaps that might be created in our system. Um, so again, we're just asking, have you experienced a behavioral health crisis? If yes, who is your first point of contact? And then the next question, um, is just your overall satisfaction with those services and with that intervention. Um, and we also know that experience is tough to capture with just radio buttons. Um, so similar to what we did with a couple of other areas last year, we're just providing a space for narrative responses. Um, and the intent is just that the more we can understand the experience of a person and capture their suggestions, the better our ability to enhance services um and plan for the following year. And the next question, um, last year, we had done some pretty in-depth surveys related to person-centered planning and transportation. Um, so what we had done is we had just added kind of a narrative section in the annual needs assessment. Um, this year, we're removing that needs assessment um because we have implemented some different um curriculum around person-centered planning and we're still working on some things related to transportation. Um, so these questions are just making sure that we're still capturing a person's experience and satisfaction and any possible barriers in these two areas. Uh, so the next question is just to help us understand the impact that transportation or a lack thereof might be having on the lives of the people that we support. And next slide, um, this is just intended to help us better understand the impact, um, again. And then lastly, just satisfaction with any kind of transportation service people may utilize or engage in. Um, and this next question's related to the person and family-centered planning process. Um, so just making sure that people feel like they're involved in their plan, helping us understand if people feel like they're choosing what goals are and are not included in their plans. And this next question is focused on pre-planning. Um, in our guidance to providers, um, based on the feedback of people and families that we support, we focused a lot on making sure that there's a solid pre-planning process to make sure that people understand what a person-centered plan is, what an individualized plan of service is, and that they have the opportunity to engage everyone they want in their lives in that planning process and then understand their own role in the process. So these questions are designed to see how well we're doing at making those changes. Um, and with the impact of the pandemic on our direct support professionals, we uh wanted to keep the questions that we had last year in our needs assessment again this year to understand people's experience with the direct support professionals that are serving them. Uh, so this next question is just to understand the relationship people have with the direct support professionals they work with. And that is the end of the questions that are unique for someone who um receives services. There are some additional demographic questions that we're gonna ask of everybody that I'll review at the end. But I just wanted to pause for any questions or feedback before we go into the next section of the survey.
Markaya?
Thanks, Eric. Um, Dr. Lawson, when the, when you had the different categories that people could respond under, I didn't see one for board member. Were we included in this? Cause weren't we encouraged to take the survey as well last year?
Yes, you're always encouraged to take the survey. We didn't break out a separate section for board member, but we can certainly do that if that's something that you would like to see inserted.
Um, I think it would be helpful, but I'm just one of twelve. I think it would be helpful, but I'm just one of 12.
Jonathan?
Just to refresh, how many people responded last year?
Oh, Christine's going to have to help me.
Roughly, in the thousands, though.
Yes.
Okay, so pretty big population cut, sounds like. Okay, I was just trying to get a sense of sizing things.
Sure. All right, not seeing any other hands, and I'm going to move on. These next questions are questions that we are specifically asking a family member of someone who receives services. And so these first two slides are the same question that we ask of people who receive services, but we want to understand the perspective of the family member. So this is asking the family member, what's important to your loved one? And this is just to help us understand the age of the person that they love who's receiving services. And the next two slides, again, they're the same categories, but they're asking about what's important to that family member, again, just so that we can understand the different perspectives of the people that we support. And if we can go down, so the rest of the slides in this section again are the same, but from the perspective of the family member of the people we support. So related to behavioral health crises are the next three. And then we have linking to services after going through our access process. And then the same questions related to person-centered planning and to transportation, again, just from a different perspective. So if you can go down to the everyone's invited slide, and I'm just going to pause to see if there's any feedback or guidance from the board related to the questions that we're asking of family members.
This is Jonathan. I do have a question for you. In terms of the respondents, is, are any particular class of respondents given a higher weight in terms of responses versus anyone else?
When we review the data, we always do break it out in terms of who responded. And so the person receiving services, of course, would have a weightier voice when we look at that data and when we review it. I guess then followed by the, the family and friends that support them and love them, and then our broader community.
Okay, of whomever else would respond, providers, board, et cetera, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so these next questions are going to be asked of everyone who responds to the survey. So this includes people served and their family members. So this next question just helps us understand how well we're supporting the people we serve, our providers and our larger community through the ongoing pandemic. And this next question helps us to understand where people go for resources, and it allows us to really plan on how we direct information and the communications that come from OCHN. These next two questions, again, help us understand what the larger community would like us to focus on our time and funding and creating or improving. And then this next question helps us to understand best ways to disseminate the information, just so that we're making sure we're meeting people where they're at and making sure that getting that information is as convenient for people as possible. And our diversity and inclusion section, this was new last year, and we want to keep it again for this year. We want to better understand the diversity of the people we serve in our community so that we can make sure that we are honoring and including everyone's perspective and experiences in all of our efforts. And so the next several slides collect demographic information. We have age, gender identity, sexual orientation, race and ethnicity. And then we also wanted to make sure that we understand how people identify their ethnicity. So we've asked some more detailed questions for the Latinx or Hispanic community, as well as the Asian community. And then we also wanted to understand the faith, religious or spiritual beliefs of the people that might take the survey. In addition to better understanding the diversity in our community, these questions are intended to understand how we valued people as it relates to their physical, cultural, spiritual or emotional qualities that make them unique. And the next slide, we just wanted to see how diverse people view leadership positions and the predominance of prejudice or discrimination that people may have experienced or witnessed over the course of the past year. It helps us to design trainings around unconscious bias, microaggressions, different things like that throughout the year so that we can really work to make changes here. We also just wanted a general gauge of how well people think we're doing on addressing diversity and inclusion and cultural competency as an organization. And then our final question is we've just added a narrative for people that are taking our needs assessment. So any feedback that people want to give, anything that might not have been covered in the questions above, we didn't want to limit anybody's ability to tell us what's on their mind. And that is the end of the survey, so if there's any questions.
You must have done a great job because we don't have a lot.
It's Sarah Guadalupe. I did have just a quick question. On the, I was trying to figure out which slide number it was. The family slide where it asks, like one of the first family slides, asks about like the age of the person. So it stops at like 40, and then it says like 40 and above. Does it make sense to ask, like to separate it out even more? Because then further on, it is separated out. I just don't know how much of like a geriatric population we actually serve, but like 40 to 80 could be a huge range. I just was curious like how that impacts the data.
That's a good point, and it really should line up. So what we can do is take the age ranges that we have in our diversity and inclusion section, and we will match that in the family section so that we can understand the ages of the loved one that they're supporting. That makes sense to me.
Okay, yeah, because I wasn't, I was curious, like with the diversity where it asks the age range, is that the age range of the person or the person that's filling out the survey? I mean, the, the individual being supported or the person filling out the survey?
In the DEI section, that's the age of the person filling out the survey. In the family section, it's the age of your loved one. So we just, yeah, we want to, to your point, we want to understand, are you supporting a young child, a teenager, you know, an adult or all the way up through the geriatric population?
Okay, thank you.
Eric, this is Dennis Cowan on the phone.
Great, go ahead, Dennis.
So just a, I guess, a basic type question being new to this. So for those that we serve who are developmentally disabled and may not be able to respond to a questionnaire, who fills it out for them?
So they could get help from anyone that they might want to, any natural support or any person in their life. For people who might live in one of the residential homes throughout the county, we direct mail with a self-addressed stamped envelope so that they could direct that. The other option is to call our customer services department, and then they can either fill it out on their behalf. If the person doesn't want to walk through the whole survey and they just want to make a point, customer services collects that information for us so that we don't lose it.
No, that's okay. I, I understand all that, but let me get a little more specific. Let's say we have someone developmentally disabled that they can't pick up the phone. They can't, they need assistance to fill something out like this. I guess the point I'm trying to get at, who, who helps them? They, they get something in the mail. They don't even know what it is. They may not be able to read. So it might, and let's say they're at a group home. I guess what, what I'm trying to point out that I'm concerned about is who's act, who would help them fill this out? Because it obviously can't be people who run the group home. That wouldn't make, you know, they could, the, the results might not reflect how those individuals feel. I guess I'm, I'm just trying to, that's kind of more my question is for those who, there may be many in the developmentally disabled community who can't fill this out or, or with some assistance. But I think there's going to be a measure of, of folks who just don't even know what they're getting.
Sure.
How do you, yeah, go ahead.
To, to your point, you know, there again, we look to not only the people in the group home, but if they have family who visits them or other natural supports or loved ones, or then certainly their case manager, support coordinator, anybody from the, one of our core provider agencies who aren't directly affiliated can also help people. So we work really closely with those core providers when this goes out so that they do, they are aware that it's out, that they're checking in with people and making sure that anybody who wants to provide a level of feedback has an opportunity to do so.
Okay, I, I guess that's really what I'm, I mean, I, I hope, just thinking this through logically, that if there's, let's say there's six people in a group home, all six get a letter. Our, the, the, the families and whatnot may not know unless somebody tells them. So do you encourage the providers to tell the family members or to tell a guardian or to tell the caseworker that this has arrived and they need to get somebody to help them to respond to it?
Yes, we do, and I know Christine also has her hand up. She wants to weigh in on how we disseminate some of that information.
Thanks, Nicole. So to that point, we give directions with the mailing. And then not only do we send it directly to our service sites, but we include information about the survey and the process in our Let's Talk newsletter and in our Stepping Stones newsletter. So the Stepping Stones newsletter is mailed to about 15,000 people. And then the Let's Talk, which is in our electronic newsletter, that gets distributed to about 1,100 people. Then the Oakland County also sends it out on their gov distribution. So there's information in there, just making sure people know that the survey is being delivered and they're aware that they, they can help a loved one or assist a loved one. When we mail them to the service site, we don't mail an individual survey to each person. We take one envelope with a cover letter with instructions, and then we attach one group of copy or copy of the survey that's identified as being for direct support professionals, and then a copy of the survey that's identified for being for persons served only. And I will say that as the years have gone on, we started doing that about four years ago now, I think. Malkaya had asked that we do an extra effort to reach people in our specialized residential setting. So each year, the response in return to those surveys has increased.
Okay.
Is that, is that helpful?
Yeah, I mean, no, I, I assume something was being done. I mean, obviously to, so you get, I guess, for those who do these kind of things, valid results, and I'm sure they are valid results, that they are truly coming from the, 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 the person being served and/or those who they rely upon, the family, guardian, whatever, to assist them if they can't directly respond along with their caseworker or someone, and not someone who is actually involved in providing the services, helping them. Because I think that there, there could be a, although I know we have very good people that we work with, and it would just, it, there's a potential there to skew the results, and we don't want to have that done. We want to get the unvarnished truth about the services that they're providing. And it sounds to me like you set up the system. I just wasn't aware of it, and I just had that question on my mind as the, the presentation was being made. So yes, that is very helpful. Thank you.
No, I, I appreciate the question and any insight that the board has to offer in ways that we can improve the value and integrity of the survey as well as get as much input as possible.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there other questions or comments?
So I, I do have one question for the board. Is it the board's direction that you would like to see us include board member as a selection in the, the dropdown for people taking the survey?
I would be, I would be supportive of that idea. I think it'd be nice for board members to have that option.
Okay, thank you. So just in summary, then the two changes we'll make is we will make the board member dropdown option, and then we're going to align the two age ranges between the, the questions for the family of the person who receives services and our DEI questions. And we'll make those and return them to you in the board packet prior to Tuesday, and we'll ask for approval of the needs assessment at the board meeting.
Jonathan's got a comment or a question, too?
I do, and I just want to remind everyone that this is an item. We, these have been two suggestions brought forward by the board members. I don't know, is, is there an additional cutoff for people to submit additional suggestions or changes to you, Nicole?
Sheila is going to send your board packets to you, I believe, Thursday. So if people could get any feedback to Sheila and I by close of business Tuesday, so tomorrow, that would be excellent, so we can make sure it's in your packet.
Okay, and the reason I bring that up the way I just did is this is an item that will be under the consent agenda, meaning there will be no discussion on it at the board meeting, just yea or nay for all of the items in that topic arena. Correct, Nicole?
That is correct.
Okay, so if someone feels at next Tuesday's board meeting that they want further discussion, then they'll ask, they'll have to make a motion during that meeting to pull it out of the consent agenda's consideration for separate discussion. And we'll cover that at the start. But I'm hoping that between the next couple of days, people can make the proposed suggestions for, for this survey. Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification, Jonathan. I think that that's important for all the board members to understand what the process is with the consent agenda. So thank you very much, Dr. Lawson, for the presentation. That was a lot of work, and we really appreciate the presentation. We're going to move on, and the next agenda on the item is the ad hoc bylaw review committee. And I think Kalana, oh, I got, Malkaya's got her hand up. Sorry, Malkaya, I missed.
That's okay. I just, based on this conversation from our chair, I just want to ask for clarification. If someone does submit additional correction or addition between now and Tuesday, how would the rest of the board be notified of any changes? Will we get that in Board of to, to know what those changes are? And if any changes are made, will it then not be included in the consent agenda?
Okay, I, I, can I take a crack at that first, Eric? First of all, we have a, we just heard a deadline of submitting things so that any suggestions can make it into the, into the package that will be there for the board meeting. So I think the cut, the cutoff, I think you just said was Wednesday?
Close, close of business on Tuesday, so 5:00 PM tomorrow.
5:00 PM tomorrow, which means then when we get our board packets, it will have all of the suggestions forwarded by the board. So there was one by you, Malkaya, there was another one by, and Eric, and there was another one by Sarah. So those would be in there. If there's additional ones, they would be in there. If when you read your board agenda, if, if when you read the board package and you're not comfortable with some of those, or you have some additional ones, that would produce additional discussion and that, so that would mean then at the Tuesday board meeting, at the start of the meeting, when we ask to approve the agenda, at the Tuesday board meeting, at the start of the meeting, when we ask to approve the agenda, you could then at that time Malkaya or anyone else on the board say, I'd like to pull that one out of consent to have further discussion. Okay?
Well, I don't think, no, that does not. If someone adds an additional comment or question that the board members haven't heard because it's going in by close of business on Tuesday, my question is, will there be something inboardable or some notification to us that there has been additional conversation added in? Because unless it's noted, I'm not sure that everyone would be able to just pick up the packet and read it and see. And then you wouldn't know who made the suggestions like we did here in this conversation.
So what we can make sure we do, um, is in the, uh, communication template that goes in front of the PowerPoint presentation, uh, we will note the changes in that communication template as well as who made the suggestions. And then I will make sure that we highlight in the PowerPoint itself where those changes were made so that you can follow up on those.
Thank you Nicole.
No problem.
Thank you Jonathan for the clarification.
Yep, it, and again, you know, the, the point is, is if people are comfortable and it doesn't need discussion, then we'll vote on it as part of the consent. If people feel like they would like, and it only takes one person to say, I'd like to pull it out from consent. It's not, it's not, it doesn't require a vote. It just requires a, a person to make that request. Okay, just like tonight, we didn't vote on these suggestions. Just, we took them from the field, if you will. Okay? All right, um, thank you Eric.
Okay. Uh, without objection, then we will move on to the ad hoc bylaw review committee. Uh, Kalana, are you with us?
Hi, um, Mr. Lindemeyer, I am here today. Uh, I'll be brief. Uh, this is, this is coming for the committee uh, to be discussed regarding the creation or development of ad hoc committee to actually revise and review the bylaws. Um, currently, there is no committee that provides oversight or review for the bylaws. And at my understanding is that the board would like, um, the board as a whole is interested in taking a hard look at our bylaws and updating them, uh, accordingly based on current, um, practices and what should be included in those bylaws. And so my proposal, um, after speaking with Mr. Lansman, um, is that we develop a, um, ad hoc committee to actually review bylaws and make changes and recommendations for the full board's review and approval.
Is there a recommended size of a committee or is it, uh, just based on who wants to volunteer?
Well, I would leave that to the board, but I would, um, if there are people who want to volunteer and be a part of it, of course, I would recommend that they be allowed to sit in. Um, however, I, to have the entire board be a part of this or included as a study session probably wouldn't be the best use of time. Um, the other idea is that having this bylaw committee meet during, um, business hours, uh, would also probably help with moving this process along as we acclimate new board members to the board as well. So that's something to give thought to as, as this is developed or should this be developed or created.
Should we have a target timeline in, uh, in mind for when we would want to have this, uh, the committee established and set and ready to meet?
Well, I believe Mr. Lansman has his hands up, hand up to say something, but before, uh, I pass it over, um, I'd like to note that the idea was to have the ad hoc committee potentially or possibly established at the next board meeting, so later this month. So that way, once we there established, we can meet accordingly as soon as possible to get the bylaw review underway.
Okay Jonathan, did you have, uh, something? And then I think John Paul's after you.
Well, I, I will defer to John Paul first.
Uh, thank you Eric. Um, we started the, uh, the, the review of the bylaws, I believe, about a year ago, or I think it was pre-pandemic and I believe we did it in a study session as a board, um, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so if we have an ad hoc, uh, committee, you're, um, I guess it was said that, uh, it, it should be a smaller group, obviously of, of our board. And that it should be, uh, board members that are readily, that are available during business hours. Is that what, what I heard? Is that correct?
Um, that was the idea that I had, that the review could take place during business hours. Um, however, if the ad hoc committee can't meet, then that would be something that we would have to establish. So that would be based on the availability of the board members.
Okay, and you said it wasn't the best use of time. What, you think it would take too long or is there a precedent for, uh, for it? I, I know that previously I, um, when I've served on boards before, as a board collectively, we've looked at, at our bylaws, um, and reviewed them as, as a board. But those boards were not as big as this board. This is a larger number of people. So is that what it, the, the constraint is because it's such a large group that we have?
Yes, that's, that is exactly a part, a part of that reason. The other one is, um, if there are changes for other board members that need, that board, for board members who have been on the board for some time and board members who are new, they may bring a different perspective. So to have it at a study session, it, we, we wouldn't have enough time to go through line by line of, of the bylaws. Um, I think the, the best use of time would be to have persons who are interested in serving on this committee make recommendations. These recommendations are redlined in the document. They are given to the full board for review. There is nothing that would prevent the full board from reviewing the, any recommend, any recommended changes or even from making any recommendations if they decide that they wanted to sit in on an ad hoc committee meeting to provide some recommendations or even at the full board before it's actually approved. So it wouldn't prevent anyone, but because of the size of the board, um, the amount of time it would take to go through each individual provision, I think that it would be a better use of time to establish an ad hoc committee that not only reviews these bylaws now, but also has an annual review where they make recommendations to the full board based on the needs of the board.
Okay, and then, um, the work that we did do in the past, and maybe Jonathan might know the answer to this. It, I know it, it would predate several board members here and, uh, uh, but, um, do we still have that, uh, that work? Or would we be just starting from scratch on what we've, we've done at this point? And I don't know if anybody can answer that because that was, uh, when Judy was here previously.
I, I think I can answer that actually, um, Ms. Torres. So I do have some changes that were made, um, or that were modified, I believe in 2020, uh, from when I believe another attorney helped review some of the bylaws. And so I do have some of those changes, um, available, but I've also taken the liberty of making red lines to our current bylaws for review and recommendation. Should this ad hoc committee be established for us to consider as well? So yes, I have the existing, but there are also some additional things that I've noted in my review of the bylaws as well.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Please, I was gonna yield to Malkaya as well.
I thought you would.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to know, what is the, what does our bylaw speak to in terms of formulated committees? What the process is to do that?
Sure, if, if you like, I can answer that. Um, under section six of the bylaws, uh, I believe it's A1, the board is authorized as a whole to establish an advisory or ad hoc committees as it deems necessary or as required by law. So that's why I'm bringing it to the committee of the whole today. So that if, if this is something that you would like to move forward with, the motion, uh, can be made to recommend it or move it to full board. And then the full board can vote and either approve or reject that.
But the motion would be made in the board meeting, correct?
Correct, because this is a committee of the whole. Well, because this is a committee of the whole, I wanted to bring it before the committee, before it goes to the full board, so that the committee could vet it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Were there other hands up? I thought I saw Dr. Tobbs' hand go up momentarily.
It's still up.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I agree with Kalana. Um, I was chairman of the, the last time we redid the, uh, board policies and board rules. And then we said if we had any extra time, we would do the bylaws. We did it in a study session. It took us four years to do the bylaws and, uh, not the bylaws, the, uh, board rules and policies. And if you look at them, they look pretty bad, but if you, if you were looking what they looked like before, they were a carver thing and everything was in the negative reverse order. And all we did is, and I agree with Kalana, it can't be a huge committee because you get into arguments about grammar and syntax. And every line we go through would take two or three hours and then nobody would agree on the compromise. So we finally did it in a study session. I was the chairman of it and we, Betty Arrington went home and rewrote all the, uh, bylaws and then we worked from that, not bylaws, the, uh, rules and policies. We worked from that aspect. So I think it would be a mistake to have the full board try to do it. It's too many people. It's hard enough with four or five. I think it should be like five people or less. And it's going to take a long time and I don't know if we're including the, uh, when we say bylaws, if we're including the bylaws, rules and policies, probably they all need to be redone. And recently, like last year or a year and a half ago, we had a lawyer look at it and I still got those. They, they're redded out and yellowed out and they move things around, but nothing really, nothing comprehensive has changed. And our bylaws really are antiquated. They don't cover everything. We need to redo all the old ones and come up with some new ones. And I think a small committee working together to get them all done and not make the same mistakes that we made. It took us four years to get to a mediocre solution. So I really a- agree that we need a small committee that's willing to work together, maybe meet frequently, get the major principles and argue about the grammar and syntax at the end, once you have everything. And then most places do review and they have, the, the ad hoc committee can meet once a year, look at it and say, we don't have to change the bylaws at all, or we are going to change the bylaws and here's the suggestion. So that's all I have to say, but a small committee, definitely.
Any other hands? Okay, um, so I know that we have scheduled the study session at the end of the month to start on this effort. Um, I was thinking that it would be the bylaws, the board policies and the board governance policies as well. Uh, because as Steve said, we needed a facelift. The last set that I saw that was approved was September 28th, 2018, so two years ago roughly. There was also, there was also a, um, a letter about what other activities and responsibilities the board has that was drafted in December of, of 2019. So, and I would, I would welcome a committee that would want to do this work. Um, while I would love to be a part of that, um, I think that, um, I would welcome someone else to chair that and perhaps I would be involved or not. And so I was thinking, yes, at this next board meeting, we could vote to, to volun- for volunteers to be on this committee. Um, but I at least want to have a motion to say that we would have and had a, have a motion to establish an ad hoc committee. And then at the study session, solicit volunteers to actively be involved. And this is probably a good place to ask people, how does that sound?
That sounds like a reasonable process to me, Jonathan.
I see Malkaya's hand up.
I just want, I just want clarification. Are you saying you want a motion in this meeting? Or we ta- or we're making a motion in the board meeting?
We, we would make a motion at the board meeting, next board meeting to establish an ad hoc committee. Number TBD and then at the, at the study session, you could volunteer to be on it if you're interested. Okay? And then let that ad hoc committee decide who would be their chair. I see.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Lindemeyer. Um, so I agree with you. The only clarification that I'd like to make for a point is that at this month's study session, we are scheduled to go over the Open Meetings Act, the bylaws in general, ethics, compliance, things of that nature. So it's a general training. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that we were clear and on the same page in that regard.
Yeah, and that's the reason why I was suggesting that we wait to see who volunteers for the committee.
Okay.
Because once they start to read through these and understand them, some people will say, oh, I'm good with it, or others will say, oh, I really want to make some more changes based on that, that, uh, that knowledge transfer. I thought I see Bazeir's hand up.
Uh, Eric, uh, so anyway, um, I'm a little bit confused. So the next study session will be, so to speak, orientation, uh, part two with a discussion of bylaws and rules and ethics, uh, et cetera. And will we have a follow-up study session then on, uh, on the bylaws?
This, this next study session will be covering a number of topics that Kalana just mentioned, including the policies and bylaws. All right?
So, so the, so the by, so the final draft of bylaws will be discussed in a study session? Or how will that be?
No, the current, the, the current bylaws and policies will be discussed as part of understanding what they are, what they mean, what's our board's responsibility? Okay?
Yeah, I understand that part, that there'll be one of the several topics that will be covered in this upcoming study session. But as, as the, as far as the, uh, bylaws is concerned, that will be, uh, a dedicated committee. And then how is the discussion, um, among the, the whole of the board is going to be happening?
As, as that ad hoc committee makes progress in revising or not revising the policies and bylaws, they will report out, much like our, much like on our committee of the hall, where policy reports out and, uh, business ops reports out. They will report out to the, to the whole board their progress. Okay?
Miss Lansman, if I may chime in and help?
Please.
Just to kind of, okay, so just for clarification, um, Dr. Hans, um, at the next study session, we will go over generally what the current bylaws are, not necessarily an in-depth review, right? Um, I'm not here to, uh, necessarily teach the bylaws, but really just to go over like a high-level overview, high-level overview with ethics, OMA and Robert's Rules of Order, things of that nature that we utilize to govern our, uh, board communications in our meetings. Um, as it relates to what Mr. Lansman is talking about regarding the updates, the idea here is that the establishment of an ad hoc committee will allow for that group of persons to meet, review the policies and the bylaws. And what they will do is make a recommendation to the full board and, and their report in saying, hey, these are the changes that we're recommending based on our discussions. And this is why we think this is appropriate for our board. And at that point in time, the board will then either vote to either approve or reject the recommended changes from the ad hoc committee. And it may be, uh, an amendment to say, hey, go back and re-look at these items again and make these modifications here. And at that point, they may make additional recommendations at a later full board meeting. Does that answer your question? So it's not, so once, once those changes are actually approved by the full board, then that we can have another meeting to discuss them if there are any changes or questions about the changes that are made, uh, outside of those recommendations that were explained during the full board meeting by the ad hoc committee chairperson.
Well, um, my only concern is this, that in the past, when we have had conversations about these issues, that has taken a long time. And I think a, a full study session should be, or should be, uh, dedicated to, uh, this discussion among the board members. And then after that, a vote be taken to approve it or not approve it. Because there will be a lot of issues that will come up as far as I, I can tell from my past experience.
And I'm inclined to agree with you that it will take, on- once that ad hoc committee has done its- And I'm inclined to agree with you that it will take, on, once that ad hoc committee has done its, its effort, its due diligence, it will take another roll-up-our-sleeves effort for the whole board to walk through them. I don't think that that's something that would happen in a committee of the whole, or at the board meeting. Um, I think that would be a study session, once, once the heavy lift has been done by the ad hoc committee. So I do agree with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on it? Kalana, thank you. I understand you're on vacation, you came, and you attended our meeting for this, so I appreciate it.
No worries. Happy to be here.
Yeah, I appre- I appreciate it too, uh, Kalana. Um, before we move on to Jonathan under other business, uh, can we get Kalana's name spelled correctly on the slide? It's been driving me crazy ever since it's been up. So, in the future, um, that'd be great. I think she's missing an A.
Thanks, Mr. Lindemeyer. I, I didn't even catch that. Thank you.
I was like, did I call her by her, the incorrect name, and I'm looking back and forth between my notes and stuff, uh, anyway. Um, okay, under uh other business, uh, Jonathan's gonna talk about the Metro Meeting on Wednesday.
Uh, yes, the Metro Meeting, isn't it on Thursday night?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, so yes, the Metro Meeting uh is Thursday evening from 6:00 to 8:30. Uh, we are the host. I sent out an earlier email out to the board uh through Boardable, just as another friendly reminder. Most, if not all of you know, lots is, lot is going on at the state. Now that everyone's coming out of their COVID caves, uh, there seems to be more interest on renewable interest on 298, or something like that. Stepchild of 298, I, I, um, and I'm gonna try not to um, say anything negative about it, but I am bothered by, by what's being proposed. I think our CM, um, our um association is bothered by it, CMHA. I think uh our organizations are a little bothered by it. It's been a topic that's come up a number of times. So I am hoping that all of you will be able to attend um, at that call, and um learn a little bit about what's going on with what's being proposed by the legislature uh, or by the senators um in the House, and understand what are the things that we can do to perhaps influence them as well, what else, others as well that we know can do. There's a link that was sent out that if you're, if you're getting a mailing from CMHA, then you received it today about votervoice.net. Uh, and that's one of the tools to use to reach out to our legislature, to help them know that we are listening, know that we care. It's also something that could be used by anyone else as an advocate. So, again, um, just my advertisement to say, please look forward to attending and actively participating on Thursday night's call. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. I think uh next Dana wanted to speak about the uh May 18th board meeting. Dana, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I thought I took myself off muted. Thank you, Mr. Lindemeyer. I did want to give just a few updates. Thank you to our chair for bringing up reminders of that meeting, and we have an agenda that's been set, and it will focus on the health integration proposal by legislation, after, a- also another bill that's been drafted by another, another legislator. We're also gonna review advocacy plans and efforts for the um, for the public behavioral health system, and talk about the impact on our budgets. So Alan Volter will be there from CMHA, and then also we will provide updates, myself, as well as Mr. Eric Dohle from Detroit Wayne. I understand that Dave Pinkaty will not be present, but he will send a representative, and some of his board members will also be present. So just wanted to talk about that briefly, but also some of our other efforts, which I think are good. We're finally getting at the table with some folks that can really help us to advocate for the public behavioral health system. And in brief, um, on Wednesday, I was invited by the County Executive's Office to participate in a work group on strategic planning. So the Deputy County Exec Rudy Hobbs has invited me to join that meeting in person on Wednesday, so I'll give you feedback on that after that occurs, and then, of course, our meeting will be on Thursday. But I have already met with him and also talked about some things that were going on in the public behavioral health system, and he's committed to helping us um really get the word out and working with the Board of Commissions also. They've reached out to me. We were originally gonna present to that uh Board of Commissioners next month in June, but they actually, because of some of this and some, even our COVID reporting, um, as a part of the American Rescue Plan, they've invited us to actually speak next Tuesday, which is May, did I say May 18th? Yes, May 18th. So those are good things for us that we're getting out there, and we're able to advocate for the public behavioral health system. So anytime if you have any questions for me or feedback, please do not hesitate to reach out to me. I'm happy to talk about ways that we can work on these things. And then even internally, um, our, our teams are really um being instrumental in making sure that we get the word out to the community, and I tell the staff that we're all ambassadors, so we have to really represent and get out into the community and be known by the community. So we've got a lot of work to do, but I'm hopeful that we're gonna be prepared to take on these challenges. So thank you for that.
Thanks, Dana. Uh, now we're gonna move on to public comment. Is there any additional public comments?
No, we did not have any public comment this evening, Eric.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next on the uh agenda are board member comments. Oh, Sheila's got a, Sheila?
Sorry, Mr. Lindemeyer. I just want to remind Dana about the um, May 18th board meeting and tonight's decision with Troy.
Thank you, Sheila. Um, tonight is the, I believe, the Troy City Council meeting, and what they'll be deciding on is whether or not to extend the emergency, um, what is, I can't recall what it's called, but the emergency, um, so they would meet in public. So this may change tonight, which means we may be meeting face-to-face uh at our next board meeting.
Great.
Executive. Oh, she chatted. Thank you, the executive order. So we may, I just want to give you all a heads up. We may be meeting next week face-to-face, if at all possible.
So if that, if that occurs, just a reminder, you'll send a note out to all of us, but also we all need to RSVP whether we'll be in the building or remote, so they can make appropriate accommodations if it passes.
Yes.
Great. Okay, uh, board member comments. Uh, do we want to just go through the roll call like we normally do?
Dr. Guadalupe?
Uh, just thank you to everyone who presented tonight. There was a lot of information, and I know a lot that went into uh all the presentations, so thank you um to all the staff that, that did that. Have a good night.
Ms. Root?
Yes, same as always. Thank you to everyone. Have a great evening.
Mr. Torres?
Uh, no comment. Thank you.
Ms. Amy Dyer?
Um, thanks, everyone, for the presentations. Have a good night, everybody.
Dr. Tob.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really hoping, yeah, I'm, I'm muted. Everybody have a nice night, and hopefully I'll see some of you in person next Tuesday.
Ms. Bernard?
I just want to thank everybody, and otherwise, really no comment. Thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Uh, no comments, and thank everyone for their presentations.
Ms. Newman?
Thank you to the staff, as always, for providing us with uh information that we can use and um taking our concerns. Thank you for that, and have a good evening, all.
Dr. Hans?
Thank you for the presentation and putting up with my questions. Thank you. Good night.
Mr. Furman?
No additional comments. Thank you. Have a good night.
Mr. Lansman?
Thank you. Um, just looking forward to seeing people on next Tuesday if we can. Um, this morning, I heard something on WXYZ Channel 7 on the air news, and they were talking about mental health and various applications in the public of, and what is a safe application and what wasn't. One of them they didn't mention, did not mention, was the My Strength application that we have licensed for Oakland County, and I know Detroit Wayne did for Wayne County. Um, I don't know about Macomb, but I'm hoping we can find a way to help them get the word out that that's available to the general public, not just those that we serve. So, um, just thought I'd bring that up, Christine. Uh, then last, thank you so much, Marquita and Nicole. I know you guys worked an awful lot along with your teams on those presentations. There are a lot of slides, a lot of information. I really appreciate the effort that you guys put into those. So thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Lindemier?
Uh, no comment, and uh, so without objection, we'll stand adjourned, adjourned.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.